Call the meeting to order, please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call roll, please?
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Grisel?
Here.
And Counselor Furlough?
Here.
Okay, first up is the approval of council minutes from September 10th, 2014. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none? Seeing none? The...
I move for approval.
Thank you. Second. I moved in second to approve the council minutes from September 10th, 2014. I apologize. Consent calendar, we have the Lebanon City Council agenda for tonight. We have the board minutes from the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board, the Library Advisory Committee, and the...
Yeah, you didn't, you, we moved in second, but...
I didn't do roll call, did I, either?
We didn't vote on that. Consent calendar.
Okay.
Roll call, did we do roll call?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
Okay, well, when were you looking at?
Now you confuse me. Because we didn't vote on the minutes?
I move for approval.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The minutes passed. Consent calendar, Lebanon City Council agenda, Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board, Library Advisory Committee, and the Planning Commission. Any changes or corrections on the consent calendar?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and approved, moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar has passed. This is gonna be fun. Proclamation. Let's see if I can through this. Extra mile day, November 1st, 2014. Proclamation. Whereas the city of Oregon is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Lebanon is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction of their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Lebanon is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Lebanon acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile Day to create 500 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2014. Now therefore I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim... I'll go ahead. November 1st, 2014 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. And next up, we have a presentation from the Saniam Cala Puya Scenic Bike Way proposal.
Good evening, I'm Damon Tempe. I'm the chairperson of your...
Red light means on.
Don't ask me why, that's just what it means. I was coached. Anyway, I'm Damon Tempe. I'm the chairperson of your Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. We have in front of you, I hope, proposal, recommendation that is, to approve a proposal by the Saniam spokes for a scenic bike way. We're asking, or recommending that you all approve the portion that goes through the city of Lebanon as part of their proposal. I have with me Roger Gaither from the Saniam spokes. If you have any questions, he's the man to answer them. And with that, I guess if you have any questions, now's the time, please.
So can you, do you want to just give us just a real quick overview? I've gone through the brochure and it sounds really exciting for our community.
I'll be happy to do that.
Just give us a quick overview of it.
I'm Roger Gaither. I'm from Sio, but I've been a member of the Saniam spokes bicycling club for about 22 years, and that's hosted by the hospital here in town. And during those 22 years, 21 of them, the club has sponsored every year on the second Saturday in June, the Strawberry Century Bicycle Ride. And that ride brings 600 to 700 bicycle riders to Lebanon on that Saturday. And they ride a course that starts here and goes up to Sweet Home and then shifts over to the Cala Puya watershed and goes down to Brownsville and then finds its way back to Lebanon. We love this route, and we had thought, when the state began a scenic bike way program about 10 years ago, that a major portion of that route would make a lovely scenic bike way for the state. This frankly is, it's a win-win proposal. The state has currently 12 of these scenic bike ways throughout the state, and there are about three of them in the queue right now for consideration, and we have gotten good response from the state as far as our proposal. Our route would start essentially anywhere along the way that you want to start, but it goes from Lebanon to Sweet Home and Brownsville and then back, and it's 72.6 miles, and takes in the two watersheds. And riders will be coming from the northwest, from frankly, all over the world, because if we are designated as a scenic bike way, Travel Oregon, which is the PR branch of State of Oregon, will publicize this route along with all the other scenic bike ways, and people come. People come, they ride the route, they bring their wallets and their purses, and they're good guests. So what we're asking for, no money, we're just asking for your support, a letter of endorsement, so that when we make our proposal to the state, state parks, we'll have the support of the council and city of Lebanon. We currently are, actually, we're about wrapping up our visits. We've been to Sweet Home and Brownsville and Albany and the various chambers and ODOT and the county commissioners, and they've all said yea. So that's all we're asking of you. You know, give us a letter of support, and we'll press it forward.
It's a beautiful project. I mean, you guys have, I appreciate the work that you do to bring this kind of recreation and take advantage of the kind of opportunity that we have around here for bicycles. So I love it, and I appreciate all the work you're doing on it.
Thank you.
Are there any, I'm sorry, are there any proposed, I don't know what they call them, like bike rides with groups or organizations, or is that something that would come as it's designated, then people would want to maybe ride this as part of their group ride or something?
Primarily, it's going to be individuals that might form a little group of two, or four, or six, or whatever, but nothing major. However, I would point out that just a few weeks ago, there was a world-class ride that started in Waterloo for the Diabetes Association. That brought, I don't know how many riders.
Hundreds.
Hundreds of riders, and they rode essentially this route. But it's intended primarily for individual travelers.
Yeah, I think also the economic, you know, for us, we're bringing people to town and seeing Lebanon and being able to ride it scenically is awesome.
I agree, it's a great tourism opportunity. Correct me if I'm wrong, did I read somewhere that there was some question about some maintenance that might need to be done to the streets inside Lebanon?
Not to my knowledge. We have reviewed the route very carefully, and the streets in Lebanon are just fine. I mean, they ain't gonna always be better, but I mean, they're just fine. So we're not expecting anything in the way of maintenance. There will be some signs that will be installed, and the signs are provided by the state of Oregon, by the state parks department, and it would be the responsibility of the city, as I understand it, to install the signs, to put them up. And that's simply to make sure that people get through the city and on the route.
Sure, okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, I love the work that, like BLT and making, helping Lebanon become far more recreational friendly. I think this is a natural step forward.
It is. Okay, at that, do we want to get a consensus? I guess we could just do a consensus and say that I could put together a letter, and then maybe, I don't know if the council needs to sign it, or if I could just sign it and just send a draft to you guys and...
Somebody can easily make a motion.
All right. Rebecca, why don't you rank the motion? I would be glad to...
Now you do it.
I would, I would move that the council provide a letter of support to the scenic bike way application and commend the advisory board for their work with the group.
I second that, and I guess, can we discuss that? I'm pretty comfortable with you doing that and then just, and forwarding it on, and then just CCS after you've done that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to write a letter in support of the Saniam Cala Puya Scenic Bike Way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion passes. And we will provide you a letter. I'll get that together and work with you guys and get you a letter.
And I would just point out that on the sixth page of this proposal, there's information as to who you address the letter to.
Okay.
And who you send it to.
Okay. Did you guys want a copy too from the, from the ped group and the bike group? Did you want to have a copy of that also?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, I figured you would, just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have the public comment section. It's an opportunity for citizens to comment on items discussed at the earlier work session or any other city business. This council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. And I believe we have Rod Sell is on the list, so if you'd like to come on up, Rod?
Hello, everybody. Don't get to talk to you very often anymore, but it's always a pleasure. I'm here to give you some new information about the scenic bike way, to tell you that I've talked to several groups over the last few weeks, and everyone's in support of the scenic bike way. I was at a meeting, I sit on the Oregon State Scenic Bike Ways Committee, so it's a little conflict of interest here, but as long as I tell you that, everything's okay. And I learned that there's an opportunity for some new funding, new grant funding, if we make a small change to the proposal from the Saniam spokes. And I'll explain that real quickly. What it is, is, seeing as this is, there's some things that happened with Oregon State Parks and now scenic bike ways is part of the Oregon Trails program, so they're kind of under the same supervisor. And they've worked it out, so now that if a scenic bike way touches one of your facilities, then you from hereforth are able to be, to apply for, so you're eligible to apply for the Recreation Trails Grant Program with Oregon State Parks. So we've, I have a map here that I'd like to give to you that has a very small addition to the proposed scenic bike way. Linda, can I give that to you? And what it does is the scenic, proposed scenic bike way comes in on Milton Street. It comes down second and goes on Milton and goes towards the west. And right at Franklin Street, it takes a right and then heads down towards Russell. So if you were to connect to River Park, you would actually just take a left at that same intersection, go two blocks to Oak, take a right on Oak, and you go two blocks to River Street, so one block street, take a left, and then one more right, and you're right at the River Park. So by making this connection, it does several things. For one, you're now part of the scenic bike way. For two, it directs people that are looking at the scenic bike way to River Park and to Gil's Landing for camping. And I believe it helps people stay within our community and creates more tourism, because now they're having a choice whether to start here, or finish here, or just stay here during their route. And it also brings in a, you know, a small amount of revenue. For quite a while, the city's been trying to replace the River Park bathroom. So I've been trying to look for different avenues to be able to find some funding to help with that, and I think this is just one more piece of the puzzle for the future of the parks that's important that I'd like you to consider.
Good.
So is that for, I mean, because these guys have kind of a route mapped out?
Right.
So that is not necessarily for us to alter?
Well, there's a couple ways to look at that. One is, I think it's really important to get, if you're gonna make any changes to the scenic bike way, that you have to, you should do it before the state ever sees it. So if the municipality where the scenic bike way goes through wants to support that bike way, and they have, for instance, they say, well, we want to put the signs in for you. That's one way to support it. And another way to, you know, to support it is to give you a letter of support, but to say, you know, please consider taking this other route. And I know Roger, we've already talked about that. In fact, Roger made the map that I'm passing around.
So there, you've had this conversation, and they're okay with that, I just...
Well, we haven't, it's happened so quickly, we haven't had the time to get the whole spokes committee together. So that's the hesitation. And I've also talked with the Bike and Ped, and they've talked to all of their, Damon emailed all of the representatives and said they're in support of this change. But everyone felt that we're kind of, what's the proper process? You know, Saniam spokes hasn't been able to talk about it yet, because some of their committee members are actually traveling, and I didn't want to miss the opportunity to propose this before the Saniam spokes gives it to the state. So that's why I stepped forward and started contacting, I talked to Ron Whitlatch, and I talked to Jason Williams, because there's some pieces of that for maintenance and for, you know, responsibility that I wanted to make sure they heard about.
So I'm slower, so to be clear, you're asking kind of for the letter that we're gonna write to include a suggestion for a change of the proposed route?
Yes, that would, that would do it, yeah. So it'd be an official request. Roger, would you? Roger may have a better perspective on this.
My concern would be, and maybe he can address this, is with the review process already well underway, would this change require all of those entities to relook at this application? Or does that, since it only applies inside Lebanon itself, it would only apply to us?
It would only, it would only apply to Lebanon, and let me just clarify for just a couple of cents' worth of information. Rod wrote this up with us, with just a few days ago, when he learned of it. And I have an email approval from our member in Sweet Home, and I'm certainly in favor of it. I think Rod's in favor, Bill Pentart is in favor of it. The only folks that haven't weighed in on it are Doug and Donna Short, who happen to be on a bike tour down in California. And so we haven't had a chance to meet, to vote on this, but we certainly see no objection. It seems like a really great idea. And I generated an additional little map that shows the little pigtail that goes up to the park. So we have not presented our proposal to the state yet. We're just simply making our preparations to do that. And so if you folks would append that part of the route, I'm sure our committee will meet and approve it, and we will just fold it into our proposal, and nothing ever needs to be said one way or the other, because the state hasn't seen it yet.
That would make our letter very awkward. That was kind of my point. I'm like, well, we don't want to write a letter to the state but asking you to change something in that letter.
No, we're still just asking for a letter of support. That's, that's all we're asking.
David? When Rod contacted me about this stuff, I'm sorry.
Can you come forward? Yeah.
When Rod contacted me as the chairperson of your advisory board...
I polled our advisory board, all members, by email, and everybody said, yes, that's a good idea. Then I said, I don't want to get ahead of Saniam spokes, because they have not yet formally considered this. So, you know, we, your advisory board, are unanimous in favor of it, but they haven't processed it yet, so it's...
We got like 500 people that want it and two people that will, but they aren't, they're out of state. So that's a no-brainer.
Okay, so we as the advisory board looked at this, considered it, and said, yeah, sure, fine, that's great, add it. But, you know, they as the Saniam spokes haven't really formally voted on it, so I don't know what you want to do.
Okay. I will work with you guys on with the letter, to make sure that we get it right, and then we'll do that. But thank you, Rod, for bringing it up, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Rod, I'm gonna say this once, we're lucky to have you, and now I'm never gonna say that again. Thank you.
We'll say it again, Rod.
I will not.
Don't worry, Rod. Okay, going into our regular session, number one, approval to pursue alternative water intake resources. Ron Whitlatch? Oh, I'm, thank you. I apologize tonight, folks. Any other citizen comments? Thank you.
I don't want to talk on the bike thing, so if somebody does, I'll, I'm done. And mine was just a couple of questions here, I don't have an opinion, but, and I don't see where the, I'll fill the form out as soon as I get done, but Glenn Ufford, live over on Glen Oak, and I just, as listening to your concern about your, the water thing, and just a couple of things occurred to me, and one is, is the water rights, you mentioned 3,700 CFS, is that go with the canal, or does that go with the city? Okay, it was just a question, I don't know, who owns the water rights, or however that's handled legally? The other question is, it looks to me like those pumps come awful close to being in a 50, the proposed first pump, pumps would be in a 50-year floodplain area, and it's awful close, and I would think since water's been up around where Riverview School is, that it could happen again, and so, something for you to think about. And it always seemed, it seems like maybe wells would cut your treatment costs, but you'd have to scatter them all around, maybe it's higher pumping costs and all that, but just thoughts.
Thank you, appreciate that. We'll have Ron address those new ones that he wants to address, when he comes up. Was there any other, why don't you wait until you come up, Ron, for the actual? Was there any other citizen comments? I apologize, I didn't mean to cut you guys off. Okay, seeing none? Rod, you're up, number one.
I'll run this time.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Let me address your questions real quick first. Yes, the water rights do stay with the city, they don't stay with the canal, assuming we transfer them, they would stay with the canal. In terms of wells, the city has put pretty extensive research into wells, been pretty unsuccessful with wells. So that, you know, it's kind of like trying to find a needle in a haystack. Whether we can find that or not, you know, your guess is as good as mine. So with that, we went with that option. So I think, did that answer all the questions? Was there anything else? Oh, yeah, and it is 37 CFS, not 3,700 CFS. In terms of the floodplain, I believe we're up around the 300-year flood, real close to that, with the pump station would be. Obviously, the water intake wouldn't be, but the pump station would be up around a 300-year floodplain, so, you know, that's probably about as good as we're gonna get. If we have a flood over that magnitude, we've probably got bigger issues to deal with here in town, so. Okay, so with that, moving forward, what we've got before you tonight is a request from staff for a motion to approve us as staff moving forward with pursuing a river intake for our water treatment plant. We went through the background in the work session, so I won't go over too many of those details again. You know, again, timing of this, what I'd like to see, we'll probably get together with Schroder, our attorney, and also Corolo, our engineering group, will kind of lay out how we should move this thing forward. Our goal, I think, would be to have our meeting with the various agencies, have that meeting, get some, collect some information from that, and it's gonna kind of set the stage for what we do next, do, and put something together that we can bring back to council. Would also be an appropriate time, assuming that this looks, you know, again, like I said, no, no big roadblocks, to re-advice our engineering services agreement with Corolo Engineering, and form that up again for pursuing a river intake, at which time we'd bring that back to you and keep you posted. We'll try and keep you posted as much as we can along the way. I hate to, to give you information that's real jello-y, I guess is the best way to put it. I'd rather get you the hard facts as we know them, so we'll keep you posted as soon as we know that stuff. It doesn't make sense to put out what happens one day and, you know, the next day it changes. So with that, we're looking for a motion to continue pursuing the river intake, and I can answer any questions.
I move that the council approve the staff recommendation to initiate and pursue a river intake in the South Saniam for the new water treatment plant.
It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded to approve the staff pursuing a river intake on the South Saniam. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We'll keep you posted.
Thanks again for your work, we do appreciate it, really.
We're lucky to have you, Ron.
Number two is budget amendment, 2040 Visioning Consultant Contract, Gary Marks.
Members of the council, if you will recall our budget meeting this past June, during that session, I mentioned to the council that an item not covered in the budget at that period of time that we thought would come about would be the vision. And we just didn't have enough information at that time to make a sensible addition to the budget, and we agreed that we'd come back when it was appropriate and when we knew specifically what we needed to do, and we'd look at a budget amendment. And so here we are tonight. The budget amendment before you proposes to increase the Administrative and Economic Development Division of the General Fund by $50,000. That $50,000 is coming to the budget by way of an improved beginning fund balance. As you recall, we budgeted $450,000 for our beginning fund balance, which began on July 1 of this year. We ended up doing somewhat better than that, certainly a $50,000 increment. And so what Dean has put together here for you is to move, to add $50,000 to the budgeted amount of the fund balance, and then reflect that as an expenditure for the vision project in the administrative division of the general fund. So the resolution here carries all of that information that I just explained to you, and my recommendation would be that you would approve it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to respond to those.
Okay. No questions?
All right. Would you repeat again, Gary, where the money is coming from?
Sure. If you recall, when we put the budget together this spring, we were budgeting $450,000 as a beginning fund balance. We ended up doing somewhat better than that. We collected more, we brought more money forward into the new year than we thought we would. And so... And so, we're taking some of that unexpected cash and programming it to the vision. So, we're not really taking anything away from any existing allocation. This is, I hate to call it new money, but it's money that we didn't think we'd be bringing forward that we did, and we're programming it now to the vision.
That's the kind of money we like to have.
So, either expenses were less, or revenue was greater.
Revenue was greater. Well, generally, there was a little bit of both, but I think the driving force there, Robert, was more revenue than we had projected.
Any other questions?
Actually, I should, no, I should change that. It's the other way around. The department heads really, when the budget reductions were done this last spring, the budget, the department heads really knuckled down, and they watched every dollar that went out the door. And so, you saw some of both. There was improved revenue, but there certainly was additional savings that we had not anticipated. So, I need to give credit where credit is due. And I think we're doing this exercise tonight because of what our department head staff was able to accomplish.
That's the reason I asked the question, is what you had shared during my orientation, so...
Thank you. I have that reversed.
Okay, at this point, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution.
Resolution number 2014-34, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget amendment to the City of Lebanon 2014-15 budget.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2014-34. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution 2014-34 passes. Number three, award for RFP Vision 2040. Gary Marks.
Actually, we're not awarding the RFP. We're awarding a consultant services agreement. And that agreement was provided to you at your places here at the dais as the evening began. But, I did email this to all of you yesterday. And I believe the council is aware that, over the past week, that your Lebanon 2040 Steering Committee was busy at work looking at seven proposals that we received from consultants interested in facilitating our vision process. The committee met Monday last and reviewed those seven proposals. They narrowed that list down to four, that were then invited to interviews. Those interviews were conducted this past Friday. And as a result of the interviews, we were able to identify a consultant that we believe is best suited to bring the project forward. Now, before I do that, though, I want to recognize the members of the Steering Committee. I think we have a fabulous Steering Committee that Mayor Aziz has appointed. And they all worked so hard, and there was a lot of work going forward to review the seven proposals. You get these bound little booklets from each of them with, that are just thick with information. So, I'm sure that there was a lot of time over weekends and evenings that could have been spent with family and doing other fun things that was spent instead going through this exercise, all for our benefit. So, to recognize who those folks are, Michelle Steinhebel, who's with CompNorthWest, and she's out in the audience out there. Wave your hand up. Thank you, Michelle. Adam Kirkpatrick, I think many of us know who he is. He's a local dentist in town and has a real heart for this vision process. Shelley Garrett, of course, nothing can be said more about her heart for our communities as our chamber director. And then, Rob Hess, our school superintendent, someone who's been through a visioning process with the school district. Then, of course, we had, from the city, our council member, Robert Furlough, and Mayor Aziz, and myself. And so, those were the seven individuals that reviewed these proposals, narrowed it down to four, then to the one. And the one is, where'd they go here? BDS Planning and Urban Design. As I said before, the committee felt that they were really well-positioned to bring this project forward to us. And I think one of their strengths, and I think the other members of the committee would agree with me, one of their real strengths is that their team is built specifically for outreach to areas of our community that don't normally participate in public processes or who are hard to reach. And when we go forward with a community vision, one of the primary things we want to be very careful about is that while we want to hear from the usual folks and the people who are always involved, we also want to get a true cross-section of our community. And to do that, we have to reach all of the elements of our community to the fullest possible extent. So, what you have in front of you, along with the agreement, is this little, this little sheet here, which is the BDS schedule of how they see the project going forward. Your Steering Committee was able to review this during their interview process. And I'll say, one of the things I really like about this process is that it contains the process to this current school year, if you will. So, we're going to be seeing the project wrapping up in June and not carrying through the summer. My fear of a project going through the summer is that we lose momentum, and then we try to come back in the fall and wrap it up. That's probably not the best approach. Some of the other consultants had timelines that took us into next fall. This project just kind of really gets on it and gets the job done. There are community forums, there are targeted interviews from various stakeholder groups, and with some intent that some of those stakeholders are going to be identified among those populations that don't normally participate. And then, there's other, there's surveys and all sorts of outreach that's going to be going on to try to get as much input as possible to develop our vision. Now, I've talked about this before, but I want to talk about it again. Why are we doing a vision? We're doing a vision because, without knowing where we're going, how do you know we're going to get to where we want to be when we get there? No, if we get to 2040 and things are just hunky-dory and wonderful and fine, without doing any planning at all, then we got really lucky. But, I think the better approach, and the better way to program our community's resources, is to reach out to the community and ask the question, where do you think this community needs to go? Where do you want it to go? What passions do you have? What vision do you have for our community? What areas of our community do you think should be developed that aren't so much at this point? What are the assets that we have now that can be developed more? These are all questions that are going to be answered through the process. And when we're done, we anticipate that we're going to identify six to 10 focus areas. What those might be, I don't want to pre-call them, but they're going to be areas of focus where we can then do some strategic planning. So, I would imagine that, maybe not this next budget season, because we're going to be working on this, but the following one, we're going to be letting the vision and those focus areas tell us about where the resources for the city budget, for example, should be programmed. And that might be fundamentally different than what we're doing now. We don't know. But, when we get there, then we're all going to, as community leaders, we're going to have more confidence, knowing that we're really reflecting the true desires and hopes and dreams of our community and how we're using their precious tax dollars. So, that's really the underlying reason why, so that when we reach 2040, or years even before that, that there's some reason why we got to where we got. Now, true, once we get this done, the plan is going to have to be a living document. We're not going to stand with the same plan until 2040. But, it gets us started in that process of good governance through a visioning process and then subsequent strategic planning. Now, with that said, I want to be clear, too, that we're doing a consultant contract tonight for consulting services to facilitate and implement the vision project, which results in those six to 10 focus areas. Once that piece of our project is done, then there is that deliberate second piece, distinctly separate from the vision, where we'll take the vision as a foundation, look at those focus areas, and then look at developing the strategic plan, and out of that will come internal goals for the city that you, the City Council, will be setting. But, that is a secondary process. So, there may be other agreements later on that deal with strategic planning. And I want to make sure everyone understands that. I don't want any surprise on the other side where people maybe had the idea that the vision got us to where we want to go. The vision sets the broad picture. Then, the strategic planning tells us about how we're going to be specific about achieving that broader goal. So, with that, I can say with great confidence that your Steering Committee enthusiastically endorses the BDS Planning and Urban Design Team. As soon as, if you approve this tonight, we will be issuing a notice to proceed to the firm. And so, I would imagine in the coming weeks, you're going to, even in October, they have some activities here planned. You're going to see the vision project gearing up rather quickly. So, with that, I would pass along to you your Steering Committee's recommendation that you approve the professional services agreement for BDS. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer those.
I'd just like to add something. The exciting thing for me, for us as council with this project, is that when we have our yearly goal-setting meeting, it's not just setting these random goals that we hope will happen in a year or two years. And we just, they're just kind of things that we pull out of the air, even though we had a little bit of a process last, well, it was two years ago. It still felt like there was something missing. And what it was, was we didn't really have this goal down the road. And for planning for staff and for the resources, and as we make decisions as a council going forward, I think this vision is going to help us say, this is what the community stood up and said, this is what we want as Lebanon. This is where we want Lebanon to go. So, that's the exciting thing that I really like about this. And it was, it was an awesome time. It was a lot of reading. My eyes are sore from last week. But, the group did a great job, and we interviewed some really good candidates and some not-so-good candidates. But, it was a good process, and I'm real happy with the people that we selected.
Do we know how much we're going to have to pay this consulting firm?
Yeah, the contract is for $50,000, which is exactly the amount we put in our RFP. So, we're right on track financially where we thought we would be.
So, we're right there.
Yep.
And I give kudos to Gary during the process, that we were really drilling them in the conversations to make sure that there was no outside staff that we had to bring in to help support, which basically was going to be another full-time equivalent or something like that. So, that was all discussed, and that was all made clear that you will provide us all these services, not us.
I should add, this is a not-to-exceed contract. So, $50,000 is a solid amount, and I would not expect any changes to that, unless we fundamentally add to the scope, and I don't see us doing that.
Robert.
I just want to pass on my support in echoing the commendations given to the group. I was amazed at the consensus that developed very early on about the passions of the committee members, about what they were looking for out of a consultant. That broad, community-wide approach that you were talking about, Gary, to make sure that every citizen has an opportunity to be heard and to have their voice recorded and have that a part of the discussion about the future of this community. Every person who was at the table was of a like mind with that. And I think as that committee began its work by reviewing the applications, that was a good foundation for working with the consultant and staff to develop the project over these next eight months.
Having heard everything here this evening, I would move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to award the RFP for the 2040 Visioning Consultant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Were you going to say something?
I think I'm the next person.
Thank you.
Number four is the marijuana taxation update. Trey Kennedy, City Attorney.
All right. Seems like I get to talk to you guys about marijuana more than just about anything else over the last year. Just to put this in a nutshell, this shouldn't be a very long discussion. There is a movement, and if you read the Albany Democrat Herald today, it kind of explained it, of city attorneys in cities recommending to the council that they implement a tax on the sale, basically the sale of marijuana, as soon as possible to implement it before the vote, the statewide vote on legalizing marijuana becomes effective. And that law would become effective 30 days after an approval by the Oregon statewide election vote. The reason being is that we are all, almost every city in Oregon is home rural, and we, the cities, have certain authority to do certain things within their territorial boundaries. I would be lying to you if I said I thought we had a really good argument that this won't be preempted by the state. I think that if you polled city attorneys around the state, it would be overwhelmingly skeptical that it will withstand a challenge. But, there is a city attorney and a city that is likely to make that argument and make that fight. And I've been wrong before. I have been amazed by decisions of the courts and decisions of the Court of Appeals that have held decisions that I was amazed by. So, it's kind of, we talked a little bit earlier, use it or lose it. If we don't pass it now, we will never be able to pass it if we ever wanted to tax marijuana, the sale of marijuana. And so, I'm here saying, you know, if the potential for taxing marijuana, if this city, which is Ashland, is successful in arguing that they have the right to tax the sale of marijuana if it passes the vote, if we want to do that, we would have to do it now sometime before November 4. So, I'm asking you, and I've actually already prepared a resolution and a ordinance that would basically be brought before you, most likely at a special session sometime before November 4, very simply, that would then put that on the books and have it in our pocket. I was looking for a pun to use there, but I couldn't find one. In the event that we want to eventually tax marijuana if the state courts let us. That's it.
I kind of been following that, and it's like, and so, part of me says, just get it on there, whether we use it or not, just get it on there. I'm not a big proponent of taxing, you know, medical marijuana. But, we could do, it's not an issue we have to deal with right now. So, we don't have to fight the fight. We can get it on our books and then sit back and deal with this years from now when it gets decided in court. And I don't think that's such a bad idea, because we can always choose not to use it. But, this is, this is the golden opportunity to get it there, so...
The comments?
Well, I would be remiss, as a public health professional, if I were to not speak my conscience here. From a health perspective, I don't believe there's an appropriate use for recreational marijuana. And for the city to be involved in taxing and supporting that, I think will simply cause our police department and our community members countless challenges down the road. The city, second, I believe, before I joined the council, passed a moratorium, which said we weren't going to get involved in the dispensary issue, at least for a year, to see how these things were played out. Third, just because you have the capacity to tax, to do something that is contrary to federal law, supporting recreational and even medical usage of marijuana causes some significant concerns for me as a council member.
I guess, I'm not advocating either way here, but as your manager, I just want to bring forth some ideas that you might want to think about. If, in the event voters approve recreational marijuana in November, and so, that comes about, and that results in additional issues that, let's say, our police department needs to deal with, that needs to be paid for some way. Now, how do you pay for it? Well, you either go to your general taxpayers and say, hey, we have a marijuana problem, you're all gonna fork up for it, or you say, hey, we've got this tax right now where they're gonna pay for it. The people who use it are gonna pay for it. So I think I would be remiss if I didn't bring that issue up. I mean, I divorce it from all the other issues as far as what other governments are saying about it and all that, but if we find ourselves in a day, sometime in the future, where this unlikely event comes about and the court upholds city home rule and says that we can do this and we have these expenses, wouldn't it be nice to say, you know, we have a way to pay for this? I mean, for decades, that's the way the cigarette tax has been. There's been a cigarette tax and a lot of that's gone into remediation programs to address that whole smoking issue. Same thing with alcohol, there's fees paid to government for that. So, and we get some of that money back at the city. So, just putting that on the record, not taking a position either way, but looking at it from the city's point of view for a potential need to provide services in the future, you may want to have in your back pocket a funding source.
Because regardless of whether we tax it, it's gonna have pretty much zero effect on the usage in the city. We're not, we're not going to affect the use of marijuana in the city one way or the other. The only difference will be a difference in a revenue source if that unlikely day came because I believe it will pass and I believe that, you know, like you, that it's probably not likely that a city's going to be able to. It's just on the off chance, I would have us be in that position.
The only other thing I would say is that there's the additional potential that if enough cities and counties put this on the books, that, and I don't have a crystal ball, but it may have some effect when we start talking about how much of the state revenue for taxation of marijuana, how much may come back to the cities and towns. And there may be some type of a give-and-take resolution, which having this on the books in as many towns and counties and cities as possible may impact the amount that ultimately, through the state level, will filter back to the cities, towns, counties, if you understand what I'm saying. So, I mean, we're already, you're looking at me perplexed and that's why I'm following up.
No.
I mean, there's already going to be, there's already an allocation that would come back to cities and towns. I think that if you ask the city and town associations, that's probably, they don't think that's enough. That's going to be coming back to the cities and towns and maybe there will be additional leverage to escalate that amount that would go back to address the types of concerns that Gary's talking about.
Do we get revenue back from the cigarette tax at the city level?
Yes.
Cigarette and alcohol.
And alcohol.
Yeah. And in fact, I'll make the argument that we probably pay for the marijuana-induced incidents that our police have to address, but we have to do it through other funding sources now. This is an opportunity to divert that if that future that we've described comes about.
Yeah, I feel that if it is legal and the state approves it, the voters, and we have it in town, why not tax it? I mean, you know, and like I said, you know, to be able to help the officers, the problems that it will cause, because I know everybody says it won't, but it will, there will be problems we'll have to deal with from a law enforcement standpoint. And I think that doing this is, like you said, it's kind of just in your back pocket, but it's there and it's, I think it might be prudent for us to do it now. It's not gonna hurt anything. We could always repeal it if we felt bad about it for some reason down the road.
It's kind of a trip tax.
Yeah.
Chief, what would you, how would you characterize the marijuana issue in Lebanon?
Characterize it?
As far as usage goes, or?
Yeah.
I think there's, you know, unfortunately, people using it to this day. I mean, they're all over the place. And many cases involve PCS less than an ounce of marijuana. I mean, there's every day.
Can't hear you, Frank.
Yeah. I thought it was closer. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So, yeah. So I would characterize it, it's an issue that we deal with on a daily basis, PCS marijuana, marijuana usage. And the mayor touched on the fact that you got induced driving with marijuana. So I mean, it's a continuous problem that we're dealing with every day.
How much resource would you say is devoted from your department currently for that?
I would say, you know, it is dependent on what it is that we're dealing with at the particular time. For instance, if it's a driving under the influence case where it's marijuana-induced, we're talking about a couple hours at minimum. That involves two officers dealing with the situation at hand. If it's, you know, all kinds of marijuana grows, we have to go in and look at and see, make sure that it is legal. So I'd say, I'd say on a daily basis, and if I'm throwing out a guesstimate here, that I would, it involves several hours of the day for, per officer, I would say, dealing with the issue and not to mention the complaints that we get from the community itself that we respond to. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll move my mic.
I think that if this should pass for recreational, I know I'll vote against it, but I think we ought to have the way to tax it, tax it heavy, 90%. That's how I feel about it.
I'll vote yes if that's the motion.
Floyd?
Well, I think it would be prudent to have it in the mix as an option. We can have more detailed discussion in the future if indeed all of these hurdles are vast, et cetera. But it would be similar to alcohol tax or cigarette tax, so I don't see, I don't see why it's any different.
Just the issue of the rate did come up and 90%, that's the first time I've heard the 90% rate, but it would be set by resolution. In other words, it could be something that would change. Most of the cities that I've been looking at, and obviously I, you know, blatantly stole the language from the ordinance that I'm gonna put in front of you eventually, it has a 10% tax on the recreational sale, sale of recreational marijuana, and it has a provision to tax medical marijuana currently set at 0% to maintain the ability to do that in the future as well. And again, I don't think we need a vote. I think I, I've heard a consensus that we should probably, we should probably schedule a short special session sometime between now and November 4th. Why are you looking at me funny, Ms. Kizer?
What is the tax on cigarettes now?
Look in the face.
I don't know.
I don't know what it is.
I mean, that's a state, that's state-only and we get money back from it, so.
Per pack or something like that.
Tell you, it's a lot on Copenhagen, I know that, so.
So you have our direction?
Okay. And the only other thing, I was gonna say the one thing, I mean, I think we all know how Lynn County's gonna vote on it, so it's not up to Lynn County. But there is a provision in the law that would allow cities, not governmental-initiated, but initiative by the people, to outlaw the sale in a municipality. Couldn't outlaw the use in the municipality. In other words, there's nothing we could do to prohibit, if it passes in November, there'd be nothing we could do from people going over to Albany or Corvallis, assuming they don't pass the same thing, buying their recreational marijuana and coming back and smoking it in their home. But it does provide that a city can say, no, we are not going to blatantly allow the sale of it in a city.
Kind of like the dispensary issue with the medical.
Right.
But only through voter initiative.
Right.
Okay.
So we're coming back with a special session?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And city managers' report? Gary?
You know, I want to put most of the focus of my manager's report tonight, put the spotlight, if you will, on our staff. I went to the League of Oregon Cities Conference, Annual Conference, two weeks ago, and while I was there, I was invited to the League of Oregon Cities and City-County Insurance Services' Presentation Awards and was very pleased to hear the name of Lebanon called out to receive what they call their Gold Safety Award. And this is a very significant award for a city of our size with 88 full-time employees. And the only reason, the only way you can get a gold award is if in a year, the course of a fiscal year, you had no injuries that created any lost work time. That's a huge accomplishment and it accrues to us as an organization in the form of future reduction in the premiums we pay for our workers' compensation insurance. And it also says that we have some employees who are really paying attention to what they're doing on the job. They're keeping track of their work site, they're understanding what the procedures are, they're executing them properly, and they're avoiding the injuries. It also says that we have a very active employee-led safety committee that is engaged in the issue and they meet monthly and they're talking about the real issues about employee safety and keeping people safe. But probably more important than any of the things I just mentioned is that we're keeping our employees healthy and we're keeping them whole. We're not, we're not ending up with folks going home, missing fingers or limbs or injured in some awful way that we're returning them to their families as damaged and we don't want that ever to happen. So by, by working smart like our employees are, I was able, and I had nothing to do with this, I just happened to be the guy who was there at the conference, no one else was, who could pick the thing up. But it was a great honor for me to pick this up on behalf of our staff. And so tonight, I wanted to make a point of making a public show of my staff, your staff, and the tremendous achievement that they've accomplished in fiscal year 13, 14. So, other than that, I'm not sure anything else I have to say is all that important. You know about the community vision process? I've become a member of this year's Cascade Gateway Leadership Program that's put on through the Chamber of Commerce and I'm enjoying that thoroughly and learning a lot about Lebanon and the region as I do it. That's a one-day-a-month event that I think goes through this coming May, so enjoying that thoroughly. And probably the only other thing I want to mention to you is the issue of the community garden. While I was at the league conference, I met with a gal with the Heal Cities Organization and I believe prior to my arrival here, the council passed a resolution calling on Lebanon to become what they call a Heal City, which is a city that is focused on issues of good health concerning its community and its citizens. And so one of the areas that they encourage communities to work on is community gardens. And it happens, I think we've maybe addressed this some in the past, there is a group here in town that has been talking with Mayor Aziz and myself about beginning a community garden. Wanted to make you aware of that because we're probably gonna be hearing more about it, maybe some things coming up at some very, very near-in-the-future council meetings. So, Paul, was there anything else we should add about the garden at this point?
No, you know, I think I've mentioned it before, but we've looked at Porter Park, which is just off of, what is that, Russell?
Russell.
Yeah, and it's, it's an area that we have that was donated to the city as a park. It was used, I believe, Ron, as, do you know landscaping, I think, business? Are you familiar with that?
You know what?
Okay, I thought maybe you knew.
It's an undeveloped park at this point.
And I believe it actually had, it has some fruit trees on it. It actually is a really great place. And one of the ideas is we were looking at doing a park and then part of it being a community garden also for the area. And I think it's a great area to do it down there, too. So we'll be working with the folks there and Jason and the city staff.
Part of my discussion with the gal from Heal, Oregon, is a grant program that they hope to put out in the spring that would potentially provide funds for us to develop the physical aspects of the garden as far as irrigation systems and if there's pumps or things like that needed. It looks like this grant, if it comes to fruition, would be something that we would be very well situated and qualified for by virtue of the fact that the council previously put us into the Heal City program. So with that, I think I'm, I've said the important things.
Okay.
Well, you know, we've got several programs going, gardening at the schools around town. I've been to several of them and they're really, well, they're doing well.
Very positive. We've got, got the garden going in at Comp Northwest, there's gonna be a community garden there, there's the senior center. We've got the schools and then we're looking at doing this. It's pretty exciting.
Yes.
Okay, next items from council? Counselors? I have an item. I've, we've passed it out beforehand, two different review forms. It is our city manager's six-month review time and I believe you've hit your six-month mark already.
Oh.
And, I know, it's, it kind of just comes up on you quickly, doesn't it? Gary provided this one that he had done at some previous cities that he had been at, which is the one that has just says city manager performance evaluation. And then the city of Lebanon one is one, I believe, that we looked at quite a while back when we were looking at our previous city manager that we talked about. And I'm open for discussion, but what I would like to do is whichever we decide on or however we decide we want to do it, is to get this to you in the next week or so so that we can have it for the next meeting and then we can actually do the review next meeting.
My employment agreement with you folks says that we get to, you get to make this decision with consultation with me, so I'm gonna give you my consult. The version that you have in front of you that I provided to the mayor is one that I think just about every city I've worked for has used for me and it's been a device I've been able to use on a personal basis because I can compare myself not just to the city I'm in, but my performance even going farther back, which has been a great tool for me. I think it covers a great swath of the various areas I touch as your city manager. So I would, I would hope that that is an instrument that you might be comfortable using too going forward. So with that, I'll leave it at that.
So is the intention that we kind of, that we make a decision now what we're gonna do or?
I would like to, yeah, if we could get a consensus just on which form we like and how we want to approach this. Because I've talked to Gary and we discussed it and we would probably do it in an executive session, the actual review, that would be his preference, and then we would do, release it though publicly after that.
Because I'm, I'm pretty comfortable. I mean, I know we've put a lot of work into, into the evaluation that we use currently, but I'm pretty comfortable. You know, it's not to say, you know, we use Gary's and then we get through it and we don't like it and we want to go back to ours next time. We can, we can poo-poo his consult and go back to what we want to do. So I'm, I'm open.
Okay. Give it a go. Okay. Okay with you, Bob? This one look good?
This one? Which one?
The one that says city manager performance evaluation.
This is the one we're gonna use?
There's more questions on that one.
Yeah, there are. Yeah, I'd be comfortable, the more the better.
Robert? And Floyd? Okay with that, using that one? Okay. We'll get that emailed out to each of you if you could fill it out and have it for the next meeting and we'll send you out more information about how we're gonna do the process.
The way this process has worked for me in the past is that each individual council member fills out the form and they come together like in an executive session and you collectively develop a single one that reflects your collective assessment of my performance so that I can get a very clear reading, not just for an individual, but, I mean, you're all collectively my bosses and I value getting something that reflects that, that fact. So that's how I hope you would be able to do it.
How do you do that if, if like two counselors hate you and four like you and, and two counselors think you're, how does a council come together? I mean, I can't imagine that happening here, although, you know, Jason, he's, he's not a nice guy, but, how do you, how do you deal with that, with the council having one evaluation?
I've never had two council members hate me, so I don't, I don't know if I really have an answer for that. However, you know, through this process, each council member has plenty of opportunities to voice their thoughts about my performance to me directly, so I don't miss any of that. What I'm, I'm not saying we divorce ourselves from you individually communicating with me at all, but I'm, what I'm saying is that in addition to that, I'd like a collective view of what the body thinks about my performance.
I'd say that what you could do is do it like in an appellate opinion, you could have a majority opinion and a minority opinion and.
Okay. I like it.
Sure.
I can't imagine that would happen here, but yeah, I'm on the vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other items from council? Okay, seeing none, we have one other opportunity for the public comments. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment?
A little late, but what I caught at the tail end of your work session, and I don't think there's anything you can do because he got the council and et cetera at the time to do his CYA club, but the more I read and hear lately about Mr. Hutt, hit, cook in the books, I think there should be some way, shape, or form to nail his butt for screwing the city and laughing it all the way to the bank. Because every time we turn around, he didn't pay this bill, he didn't pay that bill, he didn't pay this, he didn't pay that. And maybe even the council that was with him at the time should stand responsibility for it. But like I say, he conned them into the CYA club when they conned them into paying for his attorney when he retired, so you can't sue him. He got you over a barrel. You just got to sit here and let the city and the employees take the blunt of his screwing you. That's all I've got to say.
One thing I will address with you, Bill, is when, I know several of us that came on board this last election, one of the things I wanted to see happen was put things that are bad or that happened in the past and move forward with things. And that's one of the things I want to try and do. It doesn't mean people shouldn't be held accountable, but I just, at this point, there's so many things that, that people could pick up or we could pick up. It's just, it's a point where we need to move forward, and I think we're in position with, with our new city manager, with the council that we have, hopefully that that doesn't happen again, honestly.
Well, I brought it up, and then I talked to Mark after he come aboard. I hope all of you are like the rest of us. You've got a bill to pay, you make a payment. Or you put monies aside if you got a balloon payment or something like that.
Absolutely.
And from what I've seen and got through my thick sawdust, there was no foresight with the previous administration.
And that's, that's going to change.
But there was, what, ten employees that's paying for this, plus the city? That's a bummer. Isn't that what you laid off when you took over, Mark, and started straightening the books up?
That actually happened before me, but you're correct that there were eleven employees that were laid off.
Well, that's a bummer. But like I say, that's all I got to say about it. It irritates the hell out of me.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments? Did you have something?
Actually, I do. If everyone's available for a noon work session, October 22nd, we'll go ahead and Trey would like to really discuss marijuana again.
Everybody check your calendars?
What day is that fall on?
It's the fourth Wednesday of the month. And that's usually, that's usually when we hold our second meetings.
Did you say at high noon?
High noon.
Twenty, twenty-second?
Yes. That works good for me.
At what time, noon?
High noon is what Trey is saying.
That's okay. I'm, I'm clear for that.
I already got it on my agenda.
I think so.
Double checks up now. I heard you got it.
Okay, you're welcome.
I put council dope.
The items from the press?
Thanks, press.
You're welcome.
Actually, the press release that came out today in the city about the water issues, did you ask Tom about those, Nigel, for the holiday period?
Oh, I'd be happy to address it now. Over the last, I don't know, couple months, maybe three months, well, three, two or three months ago, we began to recognize that there were some of our utility customers who were experiencing spikes in their utility bills. For apparently no reason, these are spikes that either up or down, significant increase or, or significant decrease. And so trying to make sense of it all, what I have discovered are two primary factors that are contributing to it. And before I address it, I'll say that we're thinking that we're probably getting on the other side of this now. But the first issue is that at the beginning of this year, the city began a program of replacing old water meters. This is something that's typical in cities when meters become a couple of decades old or, or older. You want to replace those meters because their ability to accurately gauge water usage becomes diminished. And it can actually cut both ways. It can either overestimate or underestimate. And what that builds into the, the system is some fundamental inequities between customers. If you have a customer who may be a high water user, but their meter is reading low, and then you have someone who's not using that much, but their old meter is reading them high, then there's some basic inequities in the, in the system. And so you want to be careful to, on some sort of timely basis, replace those. The city had allocated money to begin a fairly aggressive program to do that, like I said, the beginning of this year. At this point, there have been, I think, to give you an exact number, at the end of last month, 1,149 meters had been changed, which is approximately twenty percent of our system. We anticipate more meters to be changed out in the coming months. So we believe that, that as a result of these change outs, that meters that had not been reading accurately, those accounts now have accurate reads, and to the dismay of some folks, it's, it's bringing out different numbers. And that reflects on your rates and therefore what you pay. Another issue that, another, I think, primary factor that could be contributing to this, and I think this is the one that's going to pass the quickest, is that two months ago, we moved the, the processes of our meter reads in-house. Before, we had a contracted service doing that. So we had our, our crew with the maintenance department go out and start reading them, I believe it was in, Frank, I think it was August, first started that?
Yeah.
We were going out of pure trouble.
Yeah. And so what our crew has discovered is that it appears that there were some inaccurate reads from the prior service. And so there have been a few surprises where our crews read the meter, and then the, the customers received a bill and said, well, what the heck, you know, why, why the big change? And we go out and we read it again to make sure we were accurate, and sure enough, we are. And so the only thing you can lay that to is that somehow it wasn't read properly before. So while this is causing some, you know, some difficulties for some folks, everything we're doing is an attempt to maintain fairness and accuracy in our system, and like I said before, make sure that there's equity between our, our customers. So we're trying to work in those situations where there's particular hardship. I've personally weighed in on, on some of the worst cases there and tried to mitigate payment schedules or whatever we can do to, to help the customer through this time. That's certainly something we're, we're willing and prepared to do. So, and if, if a customer believes that, that they have some sort of an unusual bill, please contact our finance department. We'll be happy to go out and read your meter again. We want to make sure that there's accuracy in how we're billing our customers. So if there's any further questions about that, Alex, I'll be happy to answer them.
Well, I guess, you know, you guys have struggled for a year, two years now with this water shut-off plan proposal, and now this kind of pops in, where a couple of folks are getting apparently some pretty hefty bills. Does that mean you're going to have an amnesty or put that proposal that you've worked on for two years on hold, or, you know, with the water shut-off? Do you think it'll lead to that?
Well, the water shut-off typically in any month can impact one, maybe two percent of our customer base. So we need to understand this is not a widespread thing as far as the shut-offs go. This is on a different plane other than the meter issue, but as you brought it up, as you know, there were some changes made, I think it was earlier this year before I arrived, in notices going out with door hangers and such. My own analysis of what was done then is it was, I think it was a good faith effort to, to try to streamline our process, but in the interpretation of that, I'm not sure that our notification of, of an overdue account is all that it can be or should be. And so I have directed our finance director to look at some options for us and to report back to me in a couple of weeks, in fact, on changes that we might be able to make at minimal expense to our system, but which would be helpful to our customers, understand the status of their accounts prior to a shut-off. We're getting more shut-offs now than we did before the changes were made. And so clearly, there was some sort of a disconnect in, although a very well-intended process, we need to go full circle and, and figure out what we can do to notify our, our customers so that they have a, a fair chance to pay their bills. I think a lot of folks honestly are, are just surprised because we all have busy lives, and you get a bill and you don't realize that it's like a second notice because it doesn't really glare that at you. It's not in red or anything. So I think there's things that we can do systemically that are going to improve that. And like I said, I have that in process with my staff, and I would anticipate we'll be implementing some things in the very near future to address the shut-off issue.
Do you know what the life expectancy of the water, ten or fifteen years?
Generally, you know, my, I'm no expert on this, Alex, but having been in, in the profession for over twenty-three years now, the rule of thumb that I've always gone by is once you hit the twenty-year mark, that meter's got a lot of running time on it.
I'm like, when you're half twenty years, you work, you may not be prepared.
Right. You know, and, and at that point, that's the same, you know, twenty, twenty-five years is what you expect an asphalt street to last. So, you know, things wear out. The meter still operates, but it's not operating at an optimum level. So generally, that's what I've used, is the twenty-year kind of rule of thumb. And I believe what our crew is replacing are the oldest meters out there. So.
Anything for you, Matt?
Follow-up water, has that affected bills going up?
Pardon?
That's the, the change in the water, it's the issue right now, affecting the bills going up?
I'm not hearing again what he's saying.
He, he's wondering if the billing process has been delayed or if there's been a problem with the billing at all.
No, I, I've not seen any delay in the process. What I'm seeing is just some meter reads that are, are unexpected by some of the customers. And what I'm trying to convey here is that there's two primary possible reasons. In fact, they could be combining in some cases where a meter has been replaced. That could cause a significant change in one's bill. Or if, because of our prior situation and our meter reading and then bringing it in-house, maybe there, if there were some inaccuracies prior, that could be reflecting now with an accurate read that we're getting from our own crews. So that's kind of where I think all the, the angst might be at this point.
And how far is the flexibility business, the numbers that the bills are from changing from what they were to what they are, like what's the biggest difference?
How much of the readers, the meters reading differently, or?
Yeah. See, a hundred dollar bill or copper lower.
I've seen, I've seen a few that have been a hundred or two hundred dollars out of the ordinary, yeah. And so those were the shock ones. I, I don't think that, that that's the, the general rule of what we're seeing. But those would be some of the, the ones on the outside that we're seeing.
Okay. All right. With that, Willinger?